We'll give everyone backstage a bit of time for us to get started. It is May the 9th, 2023. This time, City Council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following: pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code; the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property under Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code; personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code; and finally, competitive matters of the public power utilities under Section 551.086 of the Texas Government Code. So at this time, council will be in recess. We will follow that up with lunch break, and then we will come back into work session at 1:30. The work session will be for our Lubbock 101 graduates, and then we will begin City Council's regular agenda promptly at 2:00 PM. So at this time, we are in recess. All right. Good afternoon. It is 1:30, and City Council is now convening or reconvening into work session in its City Council chambers regarding presentation of the Lubbock 101 class of 2023. At this time, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, our 101 class from this year. Thank you all for being here. I think we've got everybody but one today, so that's very good. Council, we're going to do just a quick introduction here in a moment. We'll start a video. Mayor's going to help us by handing out the certificates, one of the awards, and then when we're finished, I'd like to ask the entire council to go down front, and we'll get a group photo with this year's class. So to begin, so happy that we're able to continue 101. You know, we took a two-year break from it. We started it back up last year, obviously, this year. So Mayor and Council, you have 18 graduates that went through the program this session. Each of these individuals has been to five different classroom sessions, and I think many, if not all, of y'all came and welcomed the class at one of those. Twelve and a half hours of classroom time to go through this. They came out early on three Saturdays for us. So on three Saturdays, we had a chance to spend four hours each, total of 12 hours, as we walked across as much as we could of the city's total operations, left and right, up and down, and to be able to do such in roughly a 25-hour time commitment. So we're glad that we did that, very, very pleased that our students stuck with us and did that. And I think we're going to run a quick, a little over a minute, video before we move on to doing the graduation certificates.
The most surprising thing I learned as a student of Lubbock 101 is just the extensive process that Lubbock's water treatment goes through.
The most surprising thing I learned today was how much or how little staff the airport runs on and how well it's maintained.
So the most interesting thing, the most interesting thing I saw was definitely the fire. It's pretty cool to watch them put it out like that with that new machine, and the Canines were pretty cool as well.
Okay, council, as you can see, I think we do have a number of potential future employees that went through this. They thought it was educational. We thought it was try it before you buy it. So as they each get their graduation certificates today, if you'll take that out of the envelope, there'll be a job application right behind that, and we really look forward to seeing you back. In all seriousness, each of your class members in the audience today have also been provided both information and applications for city boards and commissions, and I would expect that you'll see many of these names come back up in front of you again. So with that, we'll ask Mayor Payne to take the podium, and we'll call everybody up one at a time and give them their certificates. Class, if you would, go ahead and take your seat back after you get the certificates, because you still have the awards that are to come. Okay, we're going to go, and yes, right there. We'll go in alphabetical order. We'll start off today with Aurora Benuelos.
Somebody decide beforehand when you come on.
Went well. Okay, our next graduate this year is Ms. Addison Barthold. Well, a little invisible today. Okay, moving forward, how about Kathleen Burrell? Thank you, Kathleen. Ms. Pamela Chestnut. Pamela will also be, Pamela will also be one of the seven who had perfect attendance through the entire class, so also eligible for the street sign later today. Okay, is Adam Hernandez in the audience? And that would be the perfect path.
And now.
There, Adam always gets here, but just always gets here. Welcome, Adam. Adam also went through the course with perfect attendance. Mr. Kyle McNeese. Kyle also with perfect attendance. Ms. Andrea Parker. Rumor has it that Andrea wants to be a lineman for Lubbock Power and Light after today's Mr. Alex Phillips. Alec also with perfect attendance. Ms. Bailey Ratcliffe, also with perfect attendance. Ms. Allison Roberts, the other half of our new line crew, also with perfect attendance. Mr. Mike Rowley. And Mike deserves, Mike deserves some very special thanks. Mike actually was in last year's class, unfortunately suffered an injury and had to step out, and came right back in this year to get it finished. So Mike, thanks. Mr. Dennis Satterwhite, also with perfect attendance. Okay, with that, let's call Mr. Brian Bearden, City Coordinator of all things backhoes, excavators, water lines, fire hydrants. Brian is our trade secret that we use on the first day, where he and his teams come out, allow the students to go through some skills demonstrations. He's also timing them with a timer right in their face as they go through that, but he nonetheless has a couple of awards to give out.
Thank you, Jared, for the opportunity to come out here today and do this. Appreciation, you know, thank y'all for coming out and participating. Thank y'all for listening to our guys explain what we do for the city and to see what we do, and hopefully y'all all got a good understanding of what we do and why we do it and how we do it. And a lot of times, you don't see us because it's behind the scene, and when you're at home asleep, or on the weekend, or a holiday, or something, but, you know, our guys enjoy doing this, so, you know, thank y'all for allowing us to be a part of it. And so I have two awards to give out. One was the second place for the Bowlin Pin Challenge, is what I'm going to call it. And like Jared said, we were timing, and we let you know that it was, we were going to do that, so that we picked the top two. The second place goes to Mr. Satterwhite of a time of 1 minute and 27 seconds. And first place, with a score of a minute and 16 seconds, was Allison Roberts.
So if the lineman deal doesn't work out...
And there is applications in both of those boxes.
So Brian, if you don't mind, stay right there, and we'll let you hand the street sign out here in just a moment.
Okay.
Okay, so council, as you recall from prior years, we do offer the chance for all of the class members that have perfect attendance, a way to own their very own legal City of Lubbock street sign. So Brian, if you would hold it up for us, please. On the first field day, the class members actually go to the sign shop, and that sign is made in front of them as we go forward. This year, it got made just a hair ahead of time, but nonetheless. So using the magic of randomnumbergenerator.org, we entered the seven people with perfect attendance, and Mr. Alex Phillips will be taking that home this year. Okay, and Alex, stay right there and keep a hold of your sign. If we could get everybody up to the front, Mayor and Council, if you would, we can go to the front and get a picture taken. Again, class members, on behalf of myself and the staff, we cannot thank you enough for doing this program. We do look to y'all to recommend people to go in for next year, and to the City Council,
Congratulations to you. All right. We are going to be in recess for 14 minutes and 20 seconds. Good afternoon once again. It is now 2 o'clock, and we are going to begin at this time our open session in council chambers. Thank you all for being here this afternoon. It is May the 9th of 2023, four days from my 39th birthday. I'm honored today that we have the worship leader, Jose Alaniz, from Alliance Baptist Church. He is here with his lovely wife, Lucy. So glad to have you here today. If everyone will please stand for our prayer, and then remain standing for our pledges to the national and state flag.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we have gathered here this afternoon, Lord, we just ask your blessing upon this meeting. We call upon your guidance, your wisdom. Reveal your will to every council member here, to every Lubbock citizen and interested party represented here today, Lord. We just, we just count on you to do this for us. Help us to always be mindful of the words that we speak, the actions that we take, decisions that we make, and changes that we are considered, that they not only affect us as individuals, but affect us as a community. May all of us, through your grace, your mercy, and your divine plan, pursue righteousness before you in such a manner that will glorify you and bless our city. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. We say our pledge to the United States and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Oh, no, no, you better not. All right, this time, we have citizen comments, and we're moving right to Agenda Item 4 with citizen comments. And as you all know, according to the Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a meeting regarding any matter that is posted, they will complete a sign-up form, and then they will have three minutes to speak. So as you step forward, please state your name and your address. You have three minutes. Jimmy will give you 30-second notice with a nice little ring of the bell, and then another ring to indicate your time is concluded. Again, if you'll state your name, address, and the agenda item you're speaking on, we will start with Pastor Anderson.
My name is Pastor Anderson. I live at 2914 Yute. I would like to address the UDC proposals. I've heard those in favor for signs and those against. I heard those that talk about buffers between businesses and neighborhoods. As high as the winds give here in Lubbock, those buffers will not help. We have asked for consideration or amortization because of the concern and health of Lubbock citizens in the north and east section of town. Yet it seems that our concerns have fallen on deaf ears with the suggestion of a subcommittee. Since amortization has been mentioned, have any of you visited the affected areas that might have been concerned about our concerns? If you haven't, you don't know what you're talking about, and it seems like you don't care. There are vacant and abandoned industrial buildings that have sat for years that should be rezoned from M1 and M2 because they're located within a mile of a neighborhood, and some across the street, and some in the northern section of town. There are some industrial areas of businesses that are within a mile of our neighborhoods. This is two of those industries that I'm talking about. This one's abandoned, this one's not. Both of them are sore to our eyes to have to go into our neighborhoods each day and look at something like this. Do any of you have to pass some of this to your homes? That's why we're talking about amortization. We have numerous citizens living in the M2 heavy industrial areas. There are 17% Anglo, 38% Hispanic or Latino, 57% Black. The presence of industry in a neighborhood is not welcome in sight to new business, housing, shopping, centers, or restaurants. Amortization would be important to you if you lived in an area where you can't enjoy an evening outside because of the foul smell. Amortization would not be important to you if your home is within a mile of a hanger. Amortization would not be important to you if you can't enjoy a quiet night's sleep because the industry noises. You know, each time you hear a prayer when we come to City Council meeting, I'm asking you, according to Matthew 5:12, Luke 6:31, "We are told to do unto others as you expect others to do unto you." Let's not wait for the 2080 plan. Be fair to all the citizens in Lubbock. Be fair to us, because we want to also breathe clean air.
Thank you, Pastor Anderson. All right, we next have Dora Cortez.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Dora Cortez. I live at 217 North Avenue O. I was at the special joint session on March 22nd, when you all met with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I was also at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on April 3rd. I was not able to be here at the first reading because I had babysitting issues. But I want to discuss today, not amortization, I have, we have discussed that so many, so much, I think you all are tired of us coming up here and speaking on amortization. What I want to speak to you about today is about commissions, boards, and agencies. Each one of you is responsible for naming people to these boards and agencies and commissions. They come before you, or you seek them out, or they fill applications, and you speak to them, and then you present their names, and then you vote on their names. The Planning and Zoning Commission presented a request to you after we met with them.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
I'm going to interrupt you just briefly. This is not a posted issue.
I'm sorry?
It's not posted, so this is not a citizen comment issue to speak on today. I'm going to give you just a little latitude, if you'd like to finish up briefly on your remarks, and then we will move on.
Thank you.
And if it's posted again, then you'll have the opportunity, okay?
Thank you. Appreciate that. The thing is that with, when they presented to you a subcommittee, a recommendation of a subcommittee, and also the recommendation, a subcommittee, and in that discussion, they said that a year was not enough time, you know, for them to consider amortization. We have not been dealing with the issue of amortization for a year. We've been discussing amortization for a lot longer than that. Councilwoman Joy, I sent a letter to her, it wasn't a year ago, it's been more than a year. We talked to former Mayor Pope, it's been longer than a year. The city manager was at that Zoom meeting also, it was longer than a year. We sent a demand letter, it's been longer than a year. So it's offensive to some of us who have been working on this project for over a year to hear one year, words are important, words are heard, but by people that listen to these tapes, and they say, well, one year is not enough time. Well, yes, it's not enough time, but we haven't been dealing with this issue for a year. It's been longer than a year. So again, you know, we need to educate ourselves, we need to research, we need to know what's going on in our city. And so thank you very much for hearing me out this afternoon.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez. All right, we'll next move to minutes from March 20th of 2023, which was the special City Council meeting with the EUB, as well as April 11th of 2023, the regular City Council meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Martinez Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. I have a motion and second, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 5.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign. Motion carries 7-0. We will next move to the consent agenda. This would be Items 6.1 through 6.31. We have one pool today, so if with consent and approval of council, I'd pull 6.7 off, and then we'll have brief discussion, and then I'll move that back into our consent agenda. So at this time, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Atkinson, on Agenda Item 6.7.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Really pleased to bring you Item 6.7 tonight, as well as an opportunity to introduce a few of our guests that we have with us today. The item itself is a resolution asking the City Council to nominate the La Prino Foods Company project here in Lubbock to the Governor's Office of Economic Development and Tourism, and specifically to designate this project as an enterprise project. And what this means is the City Council would need to make a certain number of findings, they are contained in your resolution, and we are nominating La Prino and making findings as follows. La Prino plans to invest approximately $870 million in new buildings, machinery, and equipment. And in fact, if you've had a chance to drive out there lately, it just gets bigger and bigger by the day. Fun to watch. Project will generate 500 new jobs, an estimated annual payroll of approximately $28.8 million. Tremendous project. Your findings are that La Prino is a qualified business under the appropriate piece of the Act, and staff recommends to you, yes, they are. We recommend, or we find, that there has been and will continue to be a high level of cooperation between the public, private, and neighborhood entities within the area, and staff says yes. Designating La Prino as an enterprise project will contribute significantly to the achievement of the city's plans for development and revitalization in an area, and again, staff would suggest yes. Further, La Prino meets the criteria for tax relief and for other incentives adopted by the city, on the grounds they'll be in a qualified site, retain a higher level of employment, economic activity, economic stability, and finally, that it is in the best interest of the city to nominate La Prino to this program. So council, kind of the final comment on this, what we're doing today is asking the City Council to make La Prino eligible to receive these funds. These funds are state sales and use tax rebates. They are not funds from the city or from Lubbock Economic Development Alliance, but rather, they get to compete on a statewide basis. but rather, they get to compete on a statewide basis, and I think that they will do very well. Mayor, if it would please you, before you consider the item, I'd like to ask Mr. Dan Alonso, the CFO of La Prino Foods, and he has several others with him, to come to the podium.
I'm going to step forward, Dan. And I guess before he speaks, I guess to council, I think my favorite part of this resolution, and maybe Dan can speak on this, is this is just not a single, this is not a double, but as our resolution says, this is a triple jumbo enterprise. So I don't know how you get better than triple jumbo, but we're certainly glad that you all are here today. We welcome you today, and so the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council members, and city leadership. My name is Dan Alonso. I'm the chief financial officer for La Prino Foods Company, based in Denver, Colorado, with plans to expand here, as you've mentioned, just up the street with our 10th manufacturing facility here in Lubbock, Texas. So I wanted to provide the city council and city leadership with a brief update on the status of the construction of our new Lubbock facility. It's hard to believe, but it's been about a year since we broke ground on that facility. It was last June, I think, when we were out here. We had a team of people doing the ceremonial opening shovel, so to speak. And here we are, a year later. We have made very steady and continued progress over the past year, and I'm pleased to report that we are on schedule and start, and plan to start the commissioning of the Phase 1 of the new plant in May of 2024. So that's just less than, about a year from right now. Shortly thereafter, in November of 2024, we expect to be begin production. And at that point, over the next few months into early 2025, we will be ramped up to about processing 4 million pounds of milk every day at that facility. Less than one year after that, so into November of 2025, we anticipate doubling the size of our production facility to take in about 8 million pounds of milk a day. And that's the full scope of that project. So we're very excited. And like I said, at this point, everything is on track, notwithstanding some, you know, challenges, as we might say, that have been persisting over the last couple of years in the world. So we've already started hiring a lot of our key employees for the factory. That hiring will ramp up through the end of this year and continue into '24, '25, and beyond. The, where possible, we always try to hire local contractors for the project. Contractors and vendors. And right now, 30% of the contractors and vendors that we've used so far during the construction phase of this project have come from the Lubbock County area, right here, based in Lubbock. So that is contract value of over $60 million that we've assigned or selected contractors for. If you back out a little bit to look at the regional level, to take a look at West Texas, you look at the local and regional contractors that we've hired there. It's about 45% of the contractors selected have been from the West Texas region, and that's about $90 million worth of contracts that have been assigned so far to date. Our team, who are here quite regularly, you probably see them around town from time to time. They appreciate the city's coordination and partnership with La Prino during the construction phase of this project. It's a very complex facility, many moving parts, and the city's expertise and professionalism has been unparalleled from other parts of the country, and we really appreciate that. We do look forward to working with the city through construction, commissioning, startup, and well into the future. We greatly appreciate the city's consideration of the resolution to nominate our forthcoming Lubbock facility for designation as an enterprise project under the Texas Enterprise Zone Act. This is a key step in our project development process that will ultimately benefit our workforce, the Lubbock community, and the state of Texas. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, very much. All right, anything else on that, Mr. Atkinson? All right, council, at this time, I would consider a motion to approve Agenda Items 6.1 through 6.31. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. I got a second on the consent agenda. Any further discussion or comments on any of the, on 6.7? All right, all in favor of approval of those agenda items? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? Our motion carries 7-0. Thank you again, La Prino, for being here. Appreciate y'all very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll next move to the regular agenda. We'll move to Agenda Item 7.1. I think if we will take a brief presentation, Brianna, we'll just go ahead and do 7.1 and 7.2?
Yes, sir.
All right, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy early birthday. Nice to be with you, council. Today, we are taking the next step in the creation of a reinvestment zone for X Fab Texas. If you'll recall, at your last meeting on April 25th, we posted a notice of intent to create the reinvestment zone, and also called the public hearing, which will be 7.1, the item 7.1 for today. Following that public hearing, we will ask for your consideration of an ordinance to establish the reinvestment zone for X Fab. You have a map here of the proposed reinvestment zone. This encompasses all of the land that includes and surrounds X Fab's building. And just as a reminder, we'll go into this a little bit more in a moment, but the purpose for the creation of this reinvestment zone is that X Fab would like for you to consider a tax abatement agreement that we will be considering at a later meeting. With a tax abatement, the only way that you can approve a tax abatement is if the property is located inside of an enterprise zone. If it is not, then we have to create a reinvestment zone within which you can issue the tax abatement. That is the purpose of the creation of the zone. Couple of notes on the reinvestment zone. We do designate these zones for five years. The, while the zone will cease to exist at the end of five years, if the tax abatement, should you decide to approve one, starts later, it will continue through the expiration date of the tax abatement agreement. We do not have to recreate the reinvestment zone based on the tax abatement. So I know the dates get a little bit off. We recreate the zone prior to the abatement agreement, but they do essentially coincide. There are two findings that are required to be able to designate a reinvestment zone. You can see those on your slide here. The first being that the improvements sought are feasible and practical, and the second being that they would be a benefit to the land that's included in the zone and the municipality after the expiration of the agreement. And then there are six criteria in the state law that a company has to qualify for to be able to receive a reinvestment zone, and we do meet criteria six. And so that's what you will find on this slide. These are the findings that show you that X Fab Texas does qualify, has met the requirements for the creation of the reinvestment zone. They do plan to invest $480 million in new machinery and equipment at their existing facility on North University. They do also plan to create approximately 100 jobs by 2028. And because of those two criteria, they do qualify under Section 6, as I mentioned, of Chapter 312, that this reinvestment zone will contribute to the retention or expansion of primary employment within the zone. Should we move forward with the creation of the zone today? Again, following a public hearing that will hold next, just have a calendar for you of the rest of the process. So should we decide to move forward today, staff will post a notice of intent to consider a tax abatement agreement for the June 13th council meeting. We are required by state law to notify the public that you'll be considering an application 30 days in advance, and so we will post that later this week. The second reading of today's ordinance, should it pass today, would be at your next meeting on May the 23rd, and then we finish up the rest of the process on June the 13th. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
And anyone have any questions at this time for Brianna? Ms. Martinez Garcia?
Not so much a question, but rather, I got to tour the facility, and they are growing and ready to grow. So it's exciting, and I think it's going to be bringing some great jobs into the area that, you know, I think is also growing in the city and sometimes not realize the potential.
Yes, you're exactly right. X Fab is kind of a hidden gem in some areas. They have very high-paying jobs. They employ a lot of our Texas Tech graduates and have a great partnership with the university, which we really appreciate. So it's a very exciting expansion. They could really go anywhere, and we are happy that they choose to continue to invest in Lubbock.
All right, thank you, Brianna. You might stay close in case there's any other questions.
Yes, sir.
Let council know Texas tax code requires a public hearing to allow interested persons to speak and present any evidence for or against the designation of an area as a reinvestment zone. So at this time, I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone, if anyone here wishes to speak on the proposed establishment, either for or against establishment of a reinvestment zone, you may approach the podium now. All right, at this time, I will now close the public hearing. That takes care of Agenda Item 7.1. So at this time, I would, we have an ordinance in front of us under 7.2. I would entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item 7.2. Thank you, Mr. Massengo, and second by Ms. Martinez Garcia. Any further discussion or questions or comments on 7.2? All right, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 7.2, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, 7.2 carries 7-0. We will now move to 7.3, which is the second reading on the adopting of the Unified Development Code and adopting a new zoning map for the city of Lubbock. I have Mr. Hino here available.
Mayor, council, as you recall, at the last meeting, you did approve the Unified Development Code and the zoning map on a first read. Before you today, you have the second read of the ordinance. If adopted today, the new UDC and the zoning map would take effect October 1st. With that, staff is here to help address any questions you might have, and I'll hand it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right, entertain a motion to approve 7.3. Thank you, Mr. Massengo. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All right, any further discussion on 7.3? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope my mind serves me correctly. I've been relaxing for a while, so I'm kind of slow getting back. Gluten-free cake will not help. I just want, I know during last council meetings, there were several things that were brought forth, being concerns for councilmen, some council members, also some things that I had spoken reference to us looking at and seeing how we might ensure that those things would be adequate for those citizens and any businesses that might be impacted. Specifically, I remember calling Ms. Joy, making reference to the buffer areas for businesses, and I think we were, that you all were asked to look at that or the desire, if I'm not, if I'm not correct, Ms. Joy, please correct me. So I'm wanting to know, in taking notes from the last council meeting, even though we voted to approve the UDC code, my understanding was that it was being approved with the understanding that some of those things brought forth would be addressed.
Eric, you want to discuss?
If I can, Mr. Mayor and council. So the, if the UDC gets adopted today, it doesn't take effect until October 1st. That gives us a grace period between adoption and effective date, and that does give us an opportunity to go through and if there's any remaining items, cleanup items, which staff is currently working through now. We plan to have a list compiled of what those might be by the end of the week, and we'll start working on those, draft those, any proposed amendments. My thought would be, and visiting with staff, would be to have any first round amendments, any cleanup items before the UDC takes effect October 1st. It would be to have those to you by August.
And I think also that has to, we can work that through P and Z as well.
Yes.
And Mr. Atkinson, maybe you speak to that, but that was, the thought was, go back, public hearing, work through those back through P and Z, and then council can bring those back up again.
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. This process will have to follow. I was just checking with Ms. Patterson-Harris. One of the items that was specifically mentioned was looking at expanding the state law 200-foot notice boundary to something larger. We were playing with 400. So we'll have several of those that we'll come back to in August.
My question with that, if you allow me, Mr. Mayor, is that, and I've had this question posed to me since I've been back from some citizens, is that we approve what we have in hand right now, and we're given the allotted time between now and October to make adjustments? Just trying to kind of wrap my relaxed and vacationed brain around the fact that sometimes, I'm just trying to see how that works, that we totally approve something, but we're not done with it. Help me, somebody.
My understanding, Ms. Patterson-Harris, was that this, that we, the staff approved what was presented, and that they felt comfortable moving forward with that, that there were some things that we may look to as you take in something that's 50 years in the making, that has not been changed or modified, that there may be some things that need to be cleaned up or addressed. This gives us the opportunity to look at those. There may be one, there may be six, there may be 10. But we still need, and I think council voted on moving forward with something, so we can begin looking at all of that and implementing the process. Is that your understanding?
Yes, sir, that's a fair statement.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that I didn't understand what we voted on at that time and decided, but as I stated, that it's kind of come to my attention and been questioned of me by some citizens as to how that truly works, to say that we approve something, but we have the opportunity to change it over the next six months. So the question becomes, then why do you approve it?
Well, I would also...
If you allow me to finish.
Sure.
Because what that says, as we look at it, is that we're saying that what we have is not done.
Well, but I'll, again, I'll speak to that, and Mr. Hino can speak from the staff's perspective. But council can always change moving forward. This can be changed before October 1st, or it can be changed after October 1st. There's no limit that says council in the future, or councils can't come forward and modify or change a code as they see fit. But that doesn't mean that we don't, the staff felt like this was important for us to move forward on, so we're not stagnating and sitting here standing water on something that prior councils had been working on for four years, and it's still not been passed.
But I, when I look at it, the only difference that I see is the fact that we will have just approved something that even though we say that in October, we will be given until October to take a look and make suggestions and changes, we can then begin having to look at the fact that nobody, not everybody wants to make those changes, and we've gone nowhere, when those, there may be some on the council who'd like to make some changes. It just kind of seems kind of, for lack of a better term, jacked up to me. It does. And I just, I just couldn't sit still and not bring this to the forefront to say that we have been of the pattern that we approve something once we're ready for it to move forward with it, and not approve it and work to move forward with it. Does that make sense, or is it just me?
Mr. Massengo?
I understand what you're saying. Let me tell you how I look at it. And I'll speak from the perspective of serving on the P and Z before I served on the council. Honestly, prior councils, you know, should have taken this up. It's a big project. I think my comment last time was that you will never, ever approve a perfected document. This is always going to be a work in progress. And I think for the sake of modernization and streamlining of the code that we've been zoning by exception to, is I think it's important to, I think, I thought it was important for the council to approve what P and Z recommended. I think it's important for us to go ahead and approve it on second reading today. And yes, I believe that we'll have an opportunity, as council people, to look at this probably one more time before October, and then we're going to continually look at it, continually look at it, to make sure we're zoning in a way that is best for our community to grow. That's the way I look at it. I don't know if that helps or not.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, address that. If we're wanting to put together something that will work well... If we're wanting to put together something that will work well for those who use the codes, we won't have an opportunity to know if it will until October. So we'll have six months to do, help me, what we'll have six months to do what?
Well, the implementation date originally in the ordinance was June 1st, so this gives us June, July, and August, and four months for us to work through processes, for them to look at any bugs or errors that are in that software, to continue to work with people that had vested interest and see if there's anything to be changed. There may be no changes, as far as I'm concerned, but P and Z brought us something, and we approved that. We also had developers, builders, and our staff that recommended this to us, that this be passed. And so if they make that statement that this needs to be passed, and we give them more time to see if there are any bugs or errors, that gives us ample opportunity to do that. If you are considering a motion to move this back to June 1st, an amendment, then that may be something that we could take up. Anything else on that end, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Give me a minute, I'm coming.
All right. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Well, I think for me, the other part is that it's going to create an opportunity for us with the six months to start creating a whole new attitude about addressing this, where we neglected or just overlooked for almost 50 years and not really reviewing it. This gives us, you know, now we're creating a new path, as, if you will, and making sure that we're looking at this constantly. So I understand what you're saying, Sheila, but for me, I think that there's been so many experts, so many perspectives, that we need to value that and put it to work. And then, you know, I think it's a constant tweaking, so I'm okay with this.
Mr. McBrayer?
The way I looked at it, Ms. Patterson-Harris, was this is sort of like a default document that was passed through the P and Z to us, and so if we can't agree on any additional changes to it, we do have a document we have approved, and we know that at this point that will become effective in October. There may be some things we want to change, but whether we can agree on those changes or not, at least we do have an approved document. That's how I approached it.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you. I just kind of left that there because I knew I'd be coming back with something. I think as I continue to hear and hear from citizens, those experts and all of that that we have heard from, we have not heard from as many citizens as we probably should have taken time for. And that's not the first time I've said that. And I don't know if you make it an implementation time of June, of July, or whatever, but I just believe, when we left here the other day, that there were some things that council members had question of. My belief was, is that I was willing to go ahead and approve it at that time, given the fact that things that had been voiced and of concern for council members would be looked at, and we would bring that forward and see if we could make those changes at this moment, and then look at moving forward. That was where I left. If somebody left at a different spot, I don't know.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Any other discussion or questions on 7.3? All right, we have a motion to second. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 7.3? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign?
Nay.
All right, motion carries 5 to 2. All right, we will now move to 7.4, which is approving a granting of variance from the 300-foot minimum distance for an alcohol permit for Chipotle. Kristin, turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As stated, Item 7.4 is a resolution to approve a separation variance to allow Chipotle Mexican Grill to obtain a TABC license. They are going to be located at 7715 Milwaukee Avenue. They are within 300 feet of Learning Tree Children's Academy. There have been eight other variances approved for businesses to hold a TABC license within 300 feet of the state care. Those businesses are listed here. And then here's a map as well. North is to the right, the daycare is outlined in yellow, the subject property in red, and the various properties with those eight businesses outlined in green. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Sager? Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Not so much a question, but just on a recent case that we experienced, something similar, some of the questions that I did ask to Kristin War, how was this different than another recent case that we heard? And as I looked at the restaurants, that's what most of them are, are restaurants, and they happen to serve liquor. They're not just bars. And so I think there was only one person that was against this, is that correct? Or that was another issue at another time, right?
The owner of the state care was in opposition to one of these requests. I looked, I could not figure out which one it was specifically, but they did not respond with this request.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
All right, 7.4, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Any further discussion on 7.4? All right, all in favor of approval of 7.4? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign?
Nay.
Motion carries 6-1. All right, we will now move to 7.5. This is just us considering and receiving the semi-annual report for the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee regarding impact fees. I will turn it over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. My apologies for that. The item before you tonight, first off, the attachment that is in your agenda packet was not the correct attachment, it was a set of minutes, so with my apologies, we now distribute to you the actual report that is referenced in your resolution. So the item tonight's going to be presented by Mr. Mike Keenum, our city engineer, and Mr. Chris Berry, who is the new chair of your Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, otherwise known as the CAC. This report coming to council on a semi-annual basis is required under the statute, and it is required for us to maintain our eligibility for the impact fee program. So with that, Mike, I guess if you want to kick us off and introduce Mr. Berry?
Sure, thanks, Jarrett. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and again, apologies for having the wrong attachment in there, we apologize for that. We've been going since June of '21 with the impact fee program, and as Jarrett stated, state law requires the committee to bring a report forward every, well, twice a year. And so this is, this is from our report back in February, that was the last one that we had done, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Berry, like you said, the new chair of the Impact Fee Committee.
Welcome, Mr. Berry.
Good afternoon, thank you. I was expecting a couple condolences, but I'll take the welcoming. Again, my name is Chris Berry, I work for Beaton Mahomes, and have been privileged to be a part of the CAC Committee for a while, and excited to take a stab at chairing this thing. I do want you guys to know that we've had good conversations in this committee. We don't always disagree, which maybe that's your litmus test, that we're doing what we're supposed to, having a good discussion, talking about where this money needs to go. A lot of our discussions have revolved around giving ourselves a year to really see what kind of income we're generating since the June 1st, 2022 deadline, until June 1st, 2023, when there's, everybody's paying impact fees. And Mike helped me with some numbers cumulative from March 31st, 2022, or, excuse me, 2023, they've collected approximately $5,148,000. So we are collecting money, we're excited. Our next meeting is scheduled for August 17th. We'll have some good discussion about where to tell that money to go, how we can help give recommendations on improvements from the capital improvement list, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Oh, I did want to recognize some of the board members, Andy Bean, who's our vice chair, Irene Cantu Franks, Katie Salter, Thomas Payne, Jonathan Hill, and Larry Bradley. Appreciate it.
Anything else from you, Mr. Keenum?
No, sir, other than just to, if you look at the report, the numbers that you have are from December of '22. That was what the semi-annual report, and Chris gave the updated through the end of March, and so you've seen in that period from December to March, we went from 3-point-something million to 5.1 million, so that's, I guess, encouraging for us as we continue to build roads and want to use this money to help that dollar go further.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Yeah, you actually said what I was going to ask you, Mr. Keenum, how lucrative has this been for us, even within this short period of time? And do you foresee it continue to grow?
Yes, ma'am, and I looked back at some of the old notes that I had, and kind of early on, we had forecast, you know, earnings of roughly 7 million a year, and so we're not seeing that yet, but that's, we're now fully in gear with that, like Mr. Berry said, that we'll see how that plays out, but, you know, we're tracking pretty well to, we've got some money now where we can actually do things with it.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy?
Just a reminder that these funds in each service area must be used in that service area.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
They moved around.
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Keenum, or condolences for Mr. Berry? All right, entertain a motion to receive the semi-annual report from CAC. Thank you, Mr. Massengo.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All in favor of receipt of this semi-annual report? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Berry, thank you, Mr. Keenum. And with that, it is 2:46 on May the 9th of 2023, and we are adjourned.